We'll be live in about 10 seconds, not even. We're good to go.
Ah, look at that. Alright, we're okay?
Yes, we're good to go.
Mr.
His audio.
Mr. Smith, we can't hear you.
Flag followed by a brief moment of silence. Alright, nobody's standing, why not?
Excuse me, TV needs your attention.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. Into the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. UCI, roll call please.
Mr. Awad. Mr. Awad.
Here, here.
Ms. Bassford.
Here.
Ms. Beltran.
Ms. Beltran left, but she's joining right now.
She's connecting back.
Rejoining right now.
I'll come back. Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daley. He is not present. Ms. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Casper. Mr. Abidrabo.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
We have a call.
Alright, the mission statement, Mr. Casper, would you please read?
Sure. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society and never changing world.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies and with this affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has noticed this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the City Clerk's Office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy 0168.
Before we begin, I just like the public to know that our meeting today is being broadcast virtually. The reason being there are, there were, and still continue to be technical issues with broadcasting the meeting as dual, meaning virtually and live. We are working on the issues at the high school. However, issues with doing the dual meeting may continue to be an issue, and we've called the people from Channel 77 to come in, and we will be working on hopefully a solution to that issue. So we felt it was most important, after all the emails and complaints that we had after last meeting of not being able to, for the public not being able to hear us, to see us, that we felt it was most important to be able to get the message to all of you and to all of you, to us, in the best possible way, and right now that is virtually. So that is why this meeting was moved to a virtual meeting. Okay, we'll move on to adoption of minutes. Do I have a motion?
We do have a recognition and award.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that, I'm sorry. I'm doing this, I'm doing this from paper right now. Recognition and award. Mr. Abidrabo, is that the one?
Yeah, thank you, President Smith.
Want to say, thank you.
Public content, Salsabia, great 12, collaboratively worked with Ms. Beth Selenina, CHS graphic design art teacher in the high school PBSIS team to develop the Clifton High School PBSIS logo. The Mustang Academy and the CHS PBSIS grades 10 to 12 program would like to formally thank Salsabia for her spectacular new logo contribution under the direction of CHS graphic design teacher, Ms. Beth Slenina. So Salsabia's favorite classes include math, American history, and art. When asked which CHS teachers had been most inspiring, those extra special divisions included Mr. DeLuca, Ms. Seiko, and the newly appointed CHS Vice Principal, Mr. Walker. Mr. DeLuca for his exponential amount of space, patience, and advice. Ms. Seiko for her mentoring and for constantly providing the perfect learning environment. And finally, Mr. Walker, her favorite WWMS teacher, who made class fun and always knew how to put a smile on her face during Salsabia's journey as CHS. She also involved herself with extra, extra activities such as the National Art Honor Society and a CHS girls' basketball team. Salsabia's future aspirations involve becoming a graphic designer, writing and illustrating her own comics, selling personal independent art. Our plans also include attending college and studying graphic design, fine arts, and drama. Salsabia's passion for, passion for art began for, art began in kindergarten when she first learned to draw. When asked what inspired her most to construct the CHS PBSIS logo, she mentioned wanting to improve upon the old style and yet the desire to make it more authentic and unique. This led to a bit more banner style and eventually the new logo. Thank you, Salsabia. And thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I'd just like to thank everybody for this opportunity. I'd like to thank my parents who support me and all that. I have my mom next to me. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, very proud of you.
Mr. Smith and Dr. Robert Tozzi, I know Dr. Tozzi, you're talking, I can't hear you.
And he's had, he's had issues all week with his, with his internet. Mine was just tonight.
While he's trying to figure that out, is there, is there any way you think we can get Salsabia a certificate of some nature? Because I feel like not just her, but anybody, any student or?
Yes, administration takes care of that, yes, yep.
And we can get the resolution. If, if, President Smith, if you want to call for a motion to pass it.
Yes, motion to move this, please. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
I apologize, who was the first?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Casper?
Mr. Casper.
Yes. Mr. Awad?
Here.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Robert Tozzi is asking if Paula Regoza could speak.
Absolutely, Ms. Regoza.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi and the Board of Education Commissioners. I, I wanted to take a moment and just really extend my gratitude and my appreciation for Miss Salsabia's contribution to the positive behavior support in schools' framework. As a high school gets ready to implement next fall, Miss Salsabia, the legacy that you're leaving behind will outlast your four years at the high school, but will certainly live long and prosper, right, to keep it in the Star Trek world. I just wanted to thank you, I think, Mr. Abidrabo. Abidrabo did an outstanding job at talking about your, your goals and your merits so far. But again, thank you for leaving your amazing legacy, and best of luck in studies in graphic design, fine arts, drama. And thank you for certainly making it a day, a great day to be a must-see. With all gratitude and thank you, and great sense of just all around thank you, and all of your teachers and peers. We'll take this forever. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Regoza.
Can anybody hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Alright, I'm back. Congratulations, Salsabia. I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you're muted.
You beat me.
I switched, I switched.
I think you're actually in twice. You gotta close one of them.
I just put one in the waiting room. So are you good now, Mr. Smith?
Okay, I think we're good. I don't know why, it's still coming on. Okay, I think we got it now. Alright, adoption of minutes, please. I have a motion. So move by Vice President Abidrabo, second. Second by Mr. Canova. Discussion.
Mr. Smith? Yes. Smith, Executive Board minutes are wrong, I was not present. Has me as being present.
Would you make those corrections, please, Mr. UCI?
Of course. The one I'm looking at, March 18th, 2021.
It does say absent, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's a lag on here, never mind. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing non-roll call.
Mr. Awad?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, to the regular minutes and abstain on the exec.
Ms. Beltran?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Ms. Danny?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo?
Yes, all around.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. UCI, Mr. Smith, I'm Jim Derry, I'm in the meeting.
Welcome, Mr. Daley.
Gotcha.
Alright, we just finished adoption of the minutes. We'll move on, communication and announcements, we have none. No reading of, oh, yes, we do. First policy reading, 2560, live animals in school. Ms. Bassford, did you want to read that?
No, it's the first adoption. It's just that I want to call the attention to the board members of the second paragraph that we, we agreed upon. If anybody has any changes, could they please contact the policy committee, we'll make the adjustments and meet.
Okay, noted for first reading. Alright, next we have a presentation of reports from administration. We have none. Alright, next move on to board committee reports, and we have quite a few. So again, I asked my colleagues if they would kindly summarize their minutes so that, we have about eight or nine of them here. So if we could start with the HSA meeting minutes, Ms. Bassford?
Yes, we met with, the HSA committee met on March 24th with School 14. It was a meeting that encompassed many people, and the administration introduced the executive, I mean, the administration, parents, teachers. From the board was myself, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Canova. Dr. Robert Tozzi once again did his presentation, and there were questions and answers from the, the audience, and we ended at 7:57 PM. Do you want me to do the rest of them, Mr. Smith?
Yes, please.
Okay, there was another HSA meeting with School 15. It started at 6:30. Once again, we had administration and the school principal, Dr. Batten Walker, President Smith, and myself were present at the meeting. Dr. Robert Tozzi did his presentation, and there were questions and answers from the audience, and that meeting ended at 7:28. School 3, School 3 had a very large presentation, and, excuse me, had a large participation of students. It started at 7 o'clock. The presentation was made by Dr. Robert Tozzi. He introduced the principal, Lynette Park, the teachers and staff, and also the HSA board. Present was Mr. Smith, myself, and Mr. Canova. A brief summary was, of the meeting, was made by Mrs. Canova. Dr. Robert Tozzi did the presentation, and questions and answers were fielded from the superintendent. Um, let me see, is there any other ones? That's it.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, next would be the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Vice President Abidrabo.
Thank you, President Smith. This is actually very exciting to have our first diversity meeting under this boards as a committee. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee began at 1:30 PM. Board attendees were Board President Jim Smith, Chairperson and Board Vice President Keen Abidrabo, Board Members Frank Casper and Commissioner Dana Beltran, Administrators, Dr. Danny Robert Tozzi, Assistant Superintendent Martizian, and Vice Principal of CHS, Hammond Hamda, Teachers Lori Llama, Carla Rodriguez, Raymond Burns, Courtney Terry, and Jacqueline Turk, and we had some students and further safety and precautions. We put their initials in all, A-H-M-M-B-O-N-R-A. Number one on the list was greetings and introductions. The meeting began with greetings and introduction of two new members. Both students introduced themselves to the overall group and gave a brief explanation of their previous experiences with diversity and inclusion. Students discussed their attendance of the Summit on Raisin in Education. Number two, inclusivity. Vice President Abidrabo spoke about the importance of inclusivity in education. Mr. Abidrabo mentioned that although race is the forefront of the conversation, it is not the only part of the conversation. He spoke about the importance of including race, gender, sexual orientation, and ability as an equal part of the conversation. Number three, student relation. CHS Vice Principal Mr. Hamda shared with the overall committee the results of the Student Relations Subcommittee. Student to student, teacher to student, and administrative to student aspects of student relations were discussed. The goal is increasing positive interactions between students, teacher, and administrators in order to promote a positive school climate. Number four, professional development. Mr. Hamda shared with the overall committee the results of the Professional Development Subcommittee. Teachers and administrators should be given a menu of professional development to choose from. The goal is to give teachers and administrators the opportunity to educate themselves on cultural differences. Different resources available for professional development were discussed. Number five, mentoring and orientation. Mr. Hamda shared with the overall committee the results of the Mentoring and Orientation Subcommittee. The goal is to create a pipeline of mentorship from the elementary level to the high school level. The importance and benefits of mentorship for students at all levels were discussed. Number six, curriculum. Mr. Hamda shared with the overall Subcommittee the results of the Curriculum Subcommittee. The goal is to create a more inclusive curriculum that would give agency to underrepresented communities. Different resources that can be used to amplify the curriculum were discussed. The meeting adjourned at 2:40 PM. Committee Chairman Keen Abidrabo, Dr. Robert Tozzi, and Vice Principal Mr. Hamda will work collaboratively to determine the date of the next Diversity and Inclusion Committee meeting. As the Chair of this committee, Mr. Smith, if I may, to you, Dr. Robert Tozzi, and I'm sure he's watching because he always joins these meetings, I want to thank Vice Principal Hamda for putting these notes together and for starting off with this lead, and as well as all of our teachers and administrators. Our teachers are very passionate, and I repeat, very passionate. Every single one of them that were listed and named today, not that the others aren't, the ones who serve on this committee that we're able to hear from and understand from, have shown what it means not only about race, but also about ability, also about gender, race, sexual orientation. They have made sure every single part of diversity has been represented at the table, and I appreciate them for it because that's what diversity is. It's not just one thing, it's all that encompass diversity. So please, Dr. Robert Tozzi, and I'll tell them myself, but as our CEO of this district, please pass on my thank you, and, and I appreciate every single one of them. Any questions? Alright, as a reminder, this committee started as Dr. Robert Tozzi's purview, as well as President Danny last year appointed certain board members as liaisons, and then President Smith created this as a committee, and now it's a collaborative. I, I mean, Ms. Bassford, Mr. Daley, you guys would tell me, I've never seen administration and boards like this work together collaboratively for the, for the district. If there has been in the past, I may be wrong, but this is the first of my, what I know about. So I'm very proud of this, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Abidrabo. Next.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Um, Jim Daley, and then I think seniority goes Jim Daley, Lucy, and myself are the longest sitting members on the board, and I can tell Mr. Abidrabo that with any committee that I have ever sat on, that we've had staff or teachers involved with, they have been 100% on board and given more than 100% of themselves. So I have nothing but positive. I don't know if Mr. Daley can chime in on this, or Ms. Danny, but we have had successful committees in the past with everybody that has really stepped up to the plate. So that I can report, yes.
Jim Daley, I would agree with Ms. Bassford.
Yes, concur.
Thank you all. Next, we will have our facilities meeting minutes. Ms. Beltran, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, so the very interesting thing that we discussed, the meeting goes from 4:00 to 5:00 PM on April 7. We discussed the roof replacement of the transportation center as well as the roof replacement at CCMS. Both are in dire need of being done and will be done. CCMS, we shared some issues that were changed to the HVAC being installed in that building. If the renovation is to pass, however, we were told that it would not have any issue if we do wind up having to put units on that roof. We talked about the welcome center bathroom renovation that needs to be done. The project would only be a TV project and only be done in a pleasant friendly way. The admin building, we talked about new parking lot options. We need to make ADA handicap spots, need to make the parking lot flow is better so that people can actually use the new welcome center. Because during the day when people come to the parking lot, the back is very full. Again, we talked about the CHS kitchen renovation update, which should be completed by the start of this new school year. Right now, we're in a little bit of a delay due to a findment, finding of asbestos. We need to do an abatement, which should delay the project about four weeks, and then we'll get going with it. It should be done by the new school year. We talked about some observations that were seen during board member's school visits, which include the trees at School 16, as well as some handicap parking District Y that needs to be handled. And then we talked about tentative capital projects for the 2021, 2022 year, and some exciting things are going to be planned. And that's pretty much it, thank you. Any questions?
Alright, anyone have any questions?
I do, Mr. Smith. Regarding the trees at School 16, if we do get prices on the removal of them, some of them are lotus trees, that wood is worth a lot of money. Lotus wood is extremely valuable, and I would be very mindful of what happened the last time. Some of the live trees were cut down by mistake, and they were carted out, and if we can make any money on selling those lotus trees, that would be something that I would be very interested in knowing about. But the wood is very valuable.
I will take it back to committee once we discuss that.
Vice President Abidrabo?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As facilities, I don't know if Commissioner Beltran and Commissioner Canova were on at the time. There was a survey conducted of the School 16 trees, and there is a report out. I think Mr. Uchi does have that information. I don't know if that would help for you to read that before making decisions on the trees, but I do agree that that area does definitely need to be cleaned up, and so many, you know, so many different aspects can be used with that area if used wisely. So I just want to remind you of the report that was conducted, I think about two years ago, Mr. Uchi, soon after, maybe? Yeah, around that, two or three years ago. And we have it, and it's going to be brought, it's going to be brought to committee with consideration of quotes that are obtained. Great, thank you.
Okay, moving next, Mr. Daley, finance?
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Canova, I don't, I'm not seeing my full screen for some reason.
That's fine. I just had a question on the, the roof replacement. Is that a full roof replacement, or is that just like a patch up on, on the part of the roof?
The transportation center is a full roof replacement, and the CCMS, the middle floor replacement is just over the gymnasium.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this, Mr. Smith, could you have somebody else read the minutes? Because I don't have full access to the text on the device I'm on right now.
Yep, Mr. Canova, would you mind reading the finance?
Yep, let me pull it up. Okay, board members present, Jim Daley, Dana Beltran, Joe Canova, and President Jim Smith, Administration President Danny Robert Tozzi, Martizian, Michael Uchi, and Eric Tomeskevich. Meeting time was 5:00 to 6:15 PM. Items of discussion, additional air scrubbers. Mr. Uchi discussed with the committee the emergent need to purchase additional 200 air scrubbers and filters for the purpose of placing additional air scrubbers in large rooms to have a stock of extras. The district had previously purchased additional 1,000. The district will now be utilizing an additional funding that was awarded from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, ESF fund, through the coronavirus relief and supplementary appropriations. through the Coronavirus Relief and Supplementer Appropriations Act. C E P eligibility. Mr. Uchi informed the community, committee that the district has taken the initial steps relating to the community eligibility provision. The district has submitted that required direct certification information by school site for eligibility determination by the N J Department of Agriculture to deter, to determine what school sites would qualify to be eligible, offer meals at no cost to all students that are eligible at a school site. Administration will update the committee once the state reviews the applications as to what school, school sites are deemed eligible. Auditor contract fiscal year twenty one, twenty two and twenty one, twenty one, twenty two. Mr. Uchi discussed with the committee that the district has not appointed an auditor for the twenty twenty one school year and is required to appoint one to be in compliance with regulations. He informed the committee that the district had previously proposed, requested proposals for the twenty twenty one school year and the district received only one response. That response was from Lurch, Vincy and Higgins, L O P, which will be up for approval on April fifteenth board agenda. Mr. Uchi informed the committee that the district should appoint an auditor prior to the twenty one, twenty two school year to be in compliance. Administration will obtain a proposal from Lurch, Vincy and Higgins and bring it back to committee at future time for twenty one, twenty two school year. Bus lease. Mr. Uchi discussed with the committee that the district is planning on purchasing through a five-year lease agreement to fifty-four passenger and two twenty-four passenger buses. The district has obtained quotes through a state contract vendor. The total quote is three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, maybe cents. The financing will be through Hunter Ten Educational Services Commission. Will be soliciting bids for the lease purchasing financing on April twentieth. Once the financing bids are received, they will be brought back to committee. That concludes the minutes. Any, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, next we'll move with uh, policy. Ms. Bassford?
Yes, the Policy Committee met yesterday, April fourteenth at five oh three P M. In attendance to President Smith, myself, uh, board members Joe Canova and Dana Beltran. In the administration, Dr. Danny Robertozzi, Mark Teigen, uh, Luis Ross. Also President, uh, President was our Board Attorney, Delise Gutierrez. The committee discussed how the board commissioners should respond to complaints or concerns from the public. Uh, I provided, myself provided uh, guidance from the Jersey School Boards for the committee to review. And we're going to discuss it in the next meeting to prepare a draft, a reply or verbiage uh, to be included into emails. Uh, commissioners' emails with the approval of the board. Um, the committee then re- reviewed and discussed policies relating to dress code for board commissioners and possible consequences for not abiding to the policy or bylaw. Ms. Gutierrez advised that the board cannot censor or reprimand the commissioner for not adhering to the bylaw. The board, however, can address policy or bylaw, non-compliance in executive session or at a board retreat. The committee agreed to add the dress code language to the remote, from the remote policy to the regular policy or bylaw and an encouragement or suggestion for board commissioners and will be present, presented at the next meeting. The committee continued uh, with discussion of policy five one 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 and the policy about allowing student, uh, children of staff members residing in other towns to enroll in Clifton uh, schools at a tuition paying student. Ms. Gutierrez will review the policy and suggest language and safeguards to ensure district interests. Discussions was held on what staff members would be eligible, how much tuition would be charged and the definition of a child. Upon presentation to the committee of Ms. Gutierrez's recommendation, the committee will finalize proposal to submit to the board. The committee reviewed and agreed upon policy uh, zero five, five, six, zero, live animals in schools to comply with the updated version provided by Strauss Esme, which was presented for first reading tonight. Our meeting adjourned at six eighteen and Mr. Ross submitted the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions?
I do. President Smith, if I may?
Vice President Abadrabo?
Thank you. Um, so this whole um, dress code of board members. I'm really curious, what's the definition of the proper dress code? Um, I mean, when I'm wearing, is that not proper? Is it somebody? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious to understand what is, what has preempted this to do so? And if our board attorney is saying that there isn't any sort of consequences to be had um, on, based on First Amendment rights. Um, what is the point of spending effort and time in doing so if it's not going to get us anywhere? I'm just curious.
May I respond, President Smith?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, so this was actually discussed two meetings ago and I asked for it to be put back on the agenda because we had unfinished business on it and we were going to ask the attorney to be present because we didn't want to make any decisions. It was prompted because of statement that was made by one of the um, the members of the audience at a last meeting. We did adopt in, I believe, last year, I don't know the exact date, about a remote po- uh, policy that had language in it about board member dress code. And the board member dress code speaks to a remote meeting about business casual. So um, being that the um, the, the community member made a comment, I brought it back to committee to talk about having that language influx into the regular committee. Um, regular meeting structure policy. Because once remote stops, we will be in regular structure. And it was from a comment that was made by the public and it was, it was a very healthy discussion. Uh, our attorney expressed um, very clearly what freedom of speech means and what we are, are and are not allowed to do.
So if I remember correctly, uh, if I remember correctly, we're basing this on a conversation. Again, I bow all my respect to every single person that comes up and speaks during public recognition. But we're basing this on somebody who did not want to share what that's from Clifton or a name or called an unknown. That person could have been from South Jersey or from Oregon for all we knew. So you know, this needs to be a deeper conversation and I'm more than happy to have, have this in public. Then rather than slap policy together and throw it in the public eye and have people vote on it. I think we need to have a healthy discussion on this. And I think this needs to be discussed.
There was also uh, another conversation and then we got an email. We got an anonymous letter and then we got an email about, from a student that was talking about not having a dress code policy as well. Um, I have to, um, it is my job as policy chair, when, when something comes to light, I bring it to policy. I have done with everything that has been facing this board. Uh, we are also addressing complaints from uh, people in the public as well. When something comes up, if we don't have it in policy, I bring it to the committee. If this board doesn't want to put the language in, then so be it. But if you want to have the discussion in public, I have no problem having that discussion. Uh, uh, there was a, there was uh, an executive, an email that went to everybody about an executive session. Uh, session we were supposed to have about an anonymous letter that never happened last meeting. Um, you know, i- it's just, if you want to have it in public, it's fine with me. I'm doing my job as the Chair Policy to bring things to the, to the Policy Committee that have to be looked at in order to uh, recommend and update and make our policies in compliance to what happens. The one item did speak to, the fact is that if a board member could do something, why can't staff and students do it as well? We addressed that in length in Policy Committee um, yesterday and the previous meeting. We have to address things that put the board at risk and I, we've done our job. If the, if the board doesn't want to go this way, then we just knock it down. It has to be addressed. It was, it was brought up by several people.
May I comment, please? Because I, I find it pretty funny to me, just personally. I find it funny that someone calls in, doesn't want to say who they are, where they're from or anything, then a week later in an anonymous letter and we're having this discussion because of freedom of speech. I feel like I just find that certain people in the public eye and also uh, in our city that tend to hide behind shadows. If you truly believe that my shirt may or was a mistake or offended someone, then you have your, you have your absolute rights to state it, but to hide behind shadows, I just find that, you know, i- it's, it's a game to suppress someone's uh, voice. And at the same time, if you're so passionate, so powerful against the, the message of what my shirt may have said or what my beliefs are, then why aren't they just showing, uh, showing up? We had a public meeting, nobody showed up to voice their opinion there. I just find that, you know, we just want to run around and make noise about a subject when there's no basis to it. And uh, Ms. Bassford, you know, I totally respect where you come as a chairwoman and I know, you know, you have many years under your belt. I totally respect that. But you know, just to slack around a couple of policies to, you know, uh, to quiet others, I, I I'm not saying you directly are trying to, but just in general, just slap policies without a redetailed discussion and, you know, instead of trying to just blame the shirt, we should talk about the message of the shirt, the purpose of the shirt. Racial injustice that's going on in not our communities, all over our country, something that's been going on for such a long time. As a person of minority, I went through a lot of racial, you know, uh, discrimination growing up, honestly, in this city. You know what I mean? Uh, local supermarkets, stuff like that. I have parents, you know, siblings. I have family members in the city that gone through, you know, certain things. And I also have family and friends all over this country, you know, from the black community, Spanish community, uh, Middle Eastern Muslim community, the Jewish community have many friends, you know, antisemitic, you know, things that happened to them and instead of just trying to blame one thing, we need to look at an overall aspect. We do have an issue in, in this country. And it does trickle down from communities, working up on a federal level of racial injustice. And I think it's time for us, you know, as board members that represent all students, not just certain students, need to shine the light on, you know, what's really going on and not try to hide it from our students, you know. But today's society, especially this generation, they have all phones, tablets and internet, majority of them, you know, information's on their fingertips. You know, we can act like nothing is going on as board members, you know, or, you know, as political leaders, you know, uh, from certain, you know, either from the presidency all the way down to, you know, local levels. We can act like nothing's going on, but kids are actually, uh, we assume them to be. And they know what's really going on out there. And it's time for us as adults, you know, to actually sit down with these people, you know, life conversation. Actually educate them and that way we may prevent it. You know, ever since I wore that shirt since now, I know I've been, I've been personally attacked, you know what I mean? It, it does not bother me because, you know, I've always voiced my opinion from what's right and what's wrong and that, and that's my God given right. And I respect everybody's, you know, opinion. You know, we may have differences from time to time on certain things. But at the end of the day, we all need to stay compassionate and it's a sensitive subject and let's, let's have a real discussion about it.
Uh, Mr. Smith, um, my job is a chairperson of policy. This board is run by policy. We operate as policy. I have been policy chair, I don't know how long. I'm very compliant in the law. When there was several comments made also about staff and student stress, I had to bring it up because, Mr. Awad, you were not on the board when we went through a very tumultuous discussion and a very tumultuous time about uniforms and student dress. And I, I, I take my job and my role as policy chair extremely serious. Dr. Robertozzi will tell you, the minute something's discussed, he's getting a sample policy, poof, right away from me because I, I, I'm, I'm in that world down in school boards. It's, it's something I do. I'm really passionate about it. It had nothing to do with what anyone was wearing. Uh, I had a mask tonight that I was going to wear if we were in person, that some people may have been offended by with, with my mask. And, but that's my right to wear it, as well as your right to wear what you want to wear. But I have to address when I hear people say something about a dress code policy for staff, a dress code policy for students. And if board members can do it, why can't other people do it? I have to bring that to my group to make the rules. And it's just, I'm doing my job.
Ms. Gutierrez, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, the first thing that I just want to point out is that we're in committee reports. Um, and, and so maybe this conversation is better left for a thorough and robust discussion of the actual policy when it gets reviewed. Um, that's one thing. The second thing I wanted to point out is that, as Ms. Bassford said, there is no board policy right now for a dress code for board members for in-person board meetings. There never has been. Um, I think it's one of those things that it has always been assumed um, among school boards that if somebody comes to a board member or the administration, when they come to an in-person board meeting, everybody would be dressed in professional business attire, casual attire, or something like that. When we went into the pandemic, um, the policy that was recommended by school boards and also by Strauss Esme uh, has just a very short line that says, um, board members will dress in professional uh, business casual, I think it is. And I think, I think, I, I wasn't the one who wrote those policies, but I think it's probably from the perspective of, since people are attending meetings from home and on, online, you know, that there was, there may have been a concern that people would be showing up in their pajamas um, for board meetings. And, and that's the only thing that this dress code policy for board members addresses is just what, whatever professional attire means to anyone. Um, the Clifton Board of Ed does have a dress code policy for staff and they have a dress code policy for students. And both of those dress code policies simply address what's appropriate attire. Uh, particularly for students that it's not clothing that will interfere or disrupt instruction. So the nine, none of the policies are rightfully so, none of them address any issues that would um, usurp anyone's constitutional freedom of speech. Uh, there, every single instance of an, any, any question whether somebody's attire, somebody's clothing is um, offensive or violates free speech or, or violates somebody else's free speech. Those things are taken on a case by case basis because they're all, it all depends on the circumstances. It depends on where we live, who we are, et cetera. So that's all that, the policy um, that's being presented addresses is just basically mimicking the policy you already have for online meetings to put it into regular board meetings.
All right, Ms. Gutierrez and President Smith. So before my time on the board and I, I want, I just want one total honest, you know, answer. Nobody has ever worn a, a, a Clifton hoodie or a Clifton sweater or something that's non-professional. Because me as a, as a, before I became a board member, as a citizen, I watched many meetings. I'm not going to name certain board members uh, on here or previously, that were not always a professional uh, uh, wear. And I, I just find it funny, the one time that I wore a certain shirt that may have said something, all of a sudden this discussion came up. For me personally, me personally, just viewing this, you know, from my lens, it's not, it's not that I wasn't more professional. I think it was the message bothered certain people. And that's where the discussion needs to go in the future. Because I've witnessed many people, you know, on board member, uh, board members on meetings before my time, that were not wearing professional mask. It's been going on for years. I've been watching this for years, ever since I was in high school up until now. I've witnessed many board members, you know, present and not present, not always in the most professional formal wear. And I just find it funny because I wore a black, black matter shirt, representing the oppressed. Represent a just, a social justice movement that's peaceful and about speaking and bringing discussion of what's really happening in our country. It irked certain people that have, you know, certain views that are always the most, you know, kindest or the most, you know, uh, heartwarming or the most honestly moral duty. And I just find it funny, the moment I wore that shirt, then all of a sudden policy wants to be brought in place. And you know, it's certain ways to suppress, uh, you know, my messaging. Go ahead, if that shirt bothers you. And I, I spoke with, you know, uh, President Smith and I also spoke with Dr. Robertozzi. I told him if that shirt bothers you, it's okay. I have ties, I have pins. I'll wear a tuxedo that's needed. And I'll also be able to, you know, express, you know, what, you know, what I, I really feel. And I would like to see, you know, once I wear, wear professional and still send out the message I want to send out. I want to see if there's still another discussion to be happened afterward because I feel like this won't go away is because it wasn't the, it wasn't the actual formal wear that I was wearing, it was actually the message. And you know, everybody has, you know, a conscience and we know, you know what, uh, we, I know personally what their intentions are, so let's not play games.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, let's kind of, yeah, let's kind of move on.
I just, I, I have to answer. Um, it's not fair. Okay, I do my job. I do my job very well on policy. Everybody knows that I am a policy person and that's all I do is compliance. We had one anonymous letter, one student letter, a couple of comments that were brought to mind. When people say about dress code policy or student policy, that triggered this conversation. It had nothing to do with who was offensive or being, Mr. Watt, I really don't appreciate. Mr. Watt, I really don't appreciate the gestures with the facial things. It's really not fair. I'm doing my job. Mr. Mr. Smith, please. It's not right. I did my job. You were on the meeting last night. Was it offensive at all? Or were we professional?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, no one's, no one's, let's just kind of stick to the questions about the minutes. Okay, gang, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to discuss this fully. Uh, but this is board, uh, committee reports and I kind of have to just adhere everyone to the, uh, to the rules of the order. So if there's no other questions on the policy committee minutes, um, Mr. Canova, I'd like to move to technology so that Mr. Casper can take the last two.
Uh, Technology Committee. Present is President Smith, myself, Ms. Beltran, Dr. Robert Tozzi, Ms. Kusilevich, Mr. Teigen, Mr. Mountain. Meeting time was 5:05 to 5:55 PM. Items of discussion. Item one, state testing. Mr. Mountain provided an update of technology preparedness for state testing. NJSLA has been canceled, but DRC access testing for ELLs and DLNs, testing for special education students are still taking place. All testing hardware and software up to date and ready to go. Two, software subscriptions. Mr. Mountain and Ms. Kusilevich provided an update of the process for evaluating new and current instructional software. Nearpod is the most recent subscription being evaluated. The product has a version currently being used by many teachers and the full paid version will be piloted soon to every, to evaluate efficiency. Chromebook repairs. Questions about Chromebook repairs were brought up by commissioners. Mr. Mountain informed everyone the numbers of repairs has increased, but not as much as expected with regards to the number of new Chromebooks since going one to one. Tech support is handling issues in person and via email and phone. Item four, CHS auditorium meetings. The committee discussed several tech, technical and procedural issues that arose at the most recent hybrid in-person remote Board of Ed meeting held at CHS. Plans and solutions are being developed to mitigate problems in the future. Item five, commissioners brought up some questions and suggestions for improvements of the board docs program. A meeting will be scheduled soon with admin, Board of Ed representatives and board docs to address concerns and to provide feedback and suggestions for improvement. Any questions?
Okay, uh, last, uh, Mr. Casper, if you would start with, uh, food service and finish with your education.
All right, uh, let me just make sure. Okay, I'm off you. Okay, so, uh, our first food service committee had met on April 7th. Yeah, oh, sorry, April 12th. Um, it's listed as finance at the top of our, our minutes, but this is the food service committee. So, uh, present were myself, uh, President Smith and Mr. Abadrabo. Administration present, uh, was Dr. Repertozy, Mr. Teigen, Mr. Rusi and Mr. Tomasovich. Other attendees were Donna Devaney and Alex Rosenberg. Our meeting time was from 5:00 to 6:15 PM. Uh, number one, food service operations overview. Ms. Delaney and Mr. Rosenberg, the district's food service directors from Pontonian, joined the committee meeting to discuss how food operation, operations have been running throughout the school year. There was a discussion about how successful the emergency food program has been in Clifton throughout the entire pandemic. Administration and the committee commended Donna, Alex and entire Pontonian staff on the fantastic job they have been doing. The food ser, the food quality, distribution, community announcements and service has been exceptional. Also, the food service website was brought up and administration talked about how the menus are accessible along with food allergy information, payment options, the free reduced lunch applications, wellness policies and nutritional facts and news. The Pontonian staff has been involved in the planning process of the CHS Clifton, the Clifton High School kitchen renovation and is very excited about opening next year after the renovation is complete. There was a discussion regarding the district-wide vending machines and potentially adding a machine to the administration building. There was a discussion regarding the paid lunch prices for the 21-22 school year. A slight increase may be necessary with minimum wage increasing and a new law stating that districts cannot use foam trays. Foam trays will be replaced with cardboard trays which are more expensive. Administration will analyze the financial hit on the cafeteria fund and recommend a paid lunch price increase at a future committee meeting before the end of the school year. Any questions on food service? Okay, Clifton Board of Ed Education Specialite Committee. The educational, Education Specialite Committee met on March, uh, March, April 12th, 2021, and it began at 4 o'clock. Attendees were myself, board president, uh, Mr. Smith, Commissioners Fawasawad and Lucy Danny. Administration included Dr. Robert Tozzi, Mr. Teigen, Mrs. Kusilevich, Ms. Rotolo, Ms. Gaba, Mr. Healy, Ms. Lucas and Ms. Tremble. And we had a guest with us, Ms. Rachel Harrington. Number one was informational. End of the year activities for kindergarten, fifth and eighth grades, uh, Ms. Gaba, Mr. Healy and Ms. Lucas. Principals gave an overview of the health and safety considerations and equity issues of creating end of the year events that include both in-person and remote students. Mr. Healy and Ms. Gaba gave an update regarding planned events for middle school students. End of year activities included a virtual National Junior Honor Society induction, virtual awards ceremony, team breakfast and who's who assemblies by class. Each student will receive a yearbook and a lawn sign, a yearbook and lawn signs will be available for sale. Ms. Lucas gave an overview of elementary activities. Preschool and kindergarten will have class-based virtual celebrations. In grade five, each student will receive a yearbook or memory book and a virtual keepsake presentation will be held in order to include all students. Options for smaller class-by-class in-person ceremonies are being considered with a final decision to be made for June. There is a line item uh, resolution on tonight's board agenda for number two, which was the ESSA Title IV grant. Uh, we had a care plus overview by Ms. Jessica Tremble. Ms. Tremble gave an overview of the roundabout, certain, the wraparound services being provided by the district to support students and staff mental health. She provided an overview of the Title IV funded care plus services which will provide individual and small group counseling for tier one students and staff consultations. These services will dovetail with the School-Based Healthcare Solutions Network grant, which is providing six transitional coaches to improve academics through mental health supports. These services are in addition to our traditional counseling programs with district counselors that are available for all students. An informational special education update was provided by Ms. Heather Rotolo. Ms. Rotolo spoke about upcoming activities for students and shared that 147 staff have completed the full six-hour nurtured heart approach training. District administration has participated in a praise meeting on March 22nd in coffee with the supervisors, was held on April 7th for parents to drop in and meet the supervisors of special services. Upcoming activities include kindness rocks on 422 and a parent workshop on toilet training on 499. Plans are being made for the ESY program which will run from July 1st through August 12th at schools 14 and 16. An informational report on summer school was provided by Ms. Janina Kusilevich. Ms. Kusilevich shared the plans are underway for summer programs across the district. Title I and III programs will be held at schools 412, 17 and CCMS with an additional school still to be determined. Multiple sites for language arts and math summer support are being identified. The integrated summer enrichment experience in a new program at CHS will provide STEAM activities. The Northern Regional Commission will provide a credit recovery summer program at CHS. Our last topic was informational from NJDOE, NJSLA and local data collection. Ms. Kusilevich shared that the New Jersey Department of Ed, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for grades three through 10 has been postponed. This testing will not take place in June. A new strong, start strong assessment will be given in September and the NJSLA will be given again in the spring of 2022. Local benchmark data from all students in grades K3, 11 and math and language arts and in grades five, eight and 11 for science have been submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education. Our meeting was adjourned at 4:59, respectively submitted by Mrs. Janina Kusilevich.
All right, any questions on either of, uh, Mr. Casper's committees?
Mr. Smith, I have a question on the education.
Mr. Daley?
I, item, I guess, yeah, on, I guess that's item, uh, or, let's see, oh, yeah, item four, item four. Are we planning, and this is really, I guess, for the superintendent or Ms. Kusilevich. Are we gonna, uh, I'm contemplating providing some summer school support uh, for other than Title I or Title III programs? In other words, uh, are we gonna have anything open to students who feel they need some remedial activity regardless if they're a Title I or Title III?
Uh, yes, Mr. Daley, uh, in addition to those programs, we are going, there's going to be a myriad of programs. So let me say it as simple as possible. If a parent wants their child in a summer program this summer, they're going to have the opportunity regardless of, whether they qualify as Title I or for any reason. If, if there are children who need extra help, we're going to have programs for every grade level, um, and every student. It, it may not be in every school, but every student will have an opportunity to attend some program if they choose or if their parent chooses.
Thank you, thank you. That answers my question.
Any other questions? Um, Mr. Rusi, if you would just have the minutes corrected to read food service and not finance. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all committees for your continued hard work. We'll move on.
Sorry, uh, the student representative committee.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I just said Max was next and I, I'm sorry, Max. Max Rubin, you are up. Can you hear us, Max?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a few important updates for this week. Uh, first, I just wanted to say that, um, the CSU, um, just created a new website. It's called the CHS Mental Health and Communications for Students page. And it's on the Clifton High School website. So if you, for students who are listening or for parents who are listening and you want to tell your students about this, um, you can go to the Clifton High School website, click on the students tab, and then in the additional resources column, the first site should be CHS Mental Health and Communications for Students. And on this page, I, it's a website I created and it has different videos targeting, uh, different ways, uh, for students to get help communicating with the staff and the administration. And just, um, there's a video Ms. Rogers and Ms. Graziano did about taking advantage of office hours because a lot of students don't know that their teachers hold office hours where they can get extra help from their teachers after school. Um, there's also a video from Mr. Figaroa about the different people you can go to if you, um, need help or if you're having some sort of emotional issue, just the different people you can contact. Um, there's another video that Ms. Charafine made and she got help from some of her students who spoke very well about the best ways to communicate with staff members since a lot of students were struggling, um, reaching their teachers. Um, so that video should help any student with that. And there's another video that, um, I originally wasn't sure if I was gonna put it on because it wasn't part of like communicating with staff members, but I decided it was too important to leave out. So I put a video, um, it was for, I think, trans visibility week. And it's just titled transgender awareness video. And it was made by this student named Ryland Stetsu. If you're listening to this, Ryland, I really appreciate what you did. You know, that was, um, really brave and just really awesome for making that video. Ryland is a trans student at our school and he made a video, just a really thoughtful video about, um, identifying trans people and just making them feel, you know, um, not, uh, I'm struggling to find the right words, but, um, just to make them feel welcome and to make them feel like they belong, which everyone deserves. Because, you know, no matter what you are, everyone's the same. You know, everyone, everyone should be treated with kindness. And that video is really effective in communicating that message. So, yeah, Ryland, you rock for listening to this. Um, we have another, uh, website, um, that's posted in the additional resources column of the student section of the Clifton High School website. That's called Digital Resources and Test Prep for Students. I've mentioned this website many times before. Um, but this is basically, uh, if you need help studying for SAT, ACT, AP exam or just any of your other classes, if you just need help studying for something, you can go to that website. And they have a video on how to pick up hard copy books from the media center, hard copy test prep books. Or they also have a catalog of eBooks, test prep eBooks that you can pick from. There's over 45 hard copy test prep books and 45 eBooks that are also with test prep materials. And you can pick them out on that site. Uh, there's also a link to Clifton Public Library Resources. Um, there's six different test prep websites with free resources on the website. And there's also eight different educational YouTube channels. I've mentioned this website before. It's gone up on the morning news. But just in case there's anyone who still doesn't know about it, definitely take advantage of that, especially if there's a test coming up for you soon. Upcoming SAT testing, I always give a shout out for this just in case anyone doesn't know, but the upcoming dates are May 8th and June 5th and spaces may or may not still be available at CHS. And I wanted to finish off tonight, um, just making one last, uh, plug-in for the referendum vote. If you still don't know, which most, most of the public probably knows at this point, but if you, you're still unaware, if you want to get to the referendum website, there's a link in Red Bold at the top of the Clifton Schools homepage. And I'm just asking anyone who, um, has a family member in Clifton or anyone who, just friends, neighbors, who don't know about the referendum yet, just spread the word. It's important we get as many people to vote as possible, especially in this, this last stretch. We only have five days till the vote. So, you know, if you have neighbors or friends or people around and you want to tell them about the referendum, please do so. We need as many people to vote as we can. Um, I made a video recently explaining the referendum to students and it went up on social media and it also went up on the high school morning show. It's still running on the morning show. We're gonna run it again tomorrow and again next Monday and maybe even next Tuesday. Uh, speaking of the morning show, um, yeah, we're still doing a great job. Uh, the cast morning show, they're still putting in their best efforts, you know, making the students informed about everything. Uh, now more than ever, I think we've really, you know, found our footing. I feel like we've gotten so good at this, um, mode of communicating, you know, the morning show's just been better than ever. So, uh, definitely check that out if you need any updates on what student life is like at CHS. Um, and also, and just to quickly go back to the video I made, uh, the main goal was, the, of the video was to inform seniors who are 18 and registered to vote uh, to cast their vote in the April 20th election. Hopefully we get as many 18-year-olds as possible to vote. Um, I know Dr. Robert Tozzi said at one point, if we can get the students, the parents and the teachers, if we get as many of them to vote as we can, that might even be enough. But e- even if you're not directly involved in the school district, I would definitely recommend going out and voting in the April 20th election. It's really important for our community in general, not just the school, but our community. And I really hope that, um, the vote is successful. That's all my updates for today. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak as always, and I will see you guys next time.
Max, thank you, uh, again for, uh, giving us, uh, so much information and doing just a wonderful job as the student representative. You've really done a fantastic job. And since I always get last fiddle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take first fiddle here and, um, make sure that everyone is aware that, uh, to congratulate Max. Uh, Max has been, um, inducted into or invited to the Passaic County Film Festival. Uh, Max does a tremendous job on putting together films and, uh, it's a great honor for you, Max, and a great honor for Clifton and Clifton High School. So I wanted to say congratulations to you for that great honor.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move along. Our next, uh, our next form of business is public recognition.
Mr. Smith, I'm seeing just a few, but the first one up is-
Mr. Smith, I'm seeing just a few, but the first one up is Ray Robertello.
Okay, first, I'm going to read the Public Recognition Statement. The, this portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested, if in person, to sign the register provided for this purpose. All speakers are asked to state their names, municipality, and subject matter before speaking. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and the response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Your questions may or may not be answered by board members. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of the state of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. With that said, we'll open Public Recognition with Mr. Ray Robertello. Mr. Robertello, if you can hear us, you got the floor. Last call, Mr. Robertello. Yes, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I was sort of switching between the computer and the television. Good evening, my name is Raymond Robertello, sixty-six Woodlawn Avenue in Clifton. What I'd like to do is spend a couple of minutes talking about the Board of Education referendum next week and why I think it's important. I'd like to clarify by saying tonight I'm representing myself as a taxpayer and as a lifelong citizen of Clifton. That's number one. Number two, I don't have children, I've never had children, I am not going to have children at this point in my life. So I don't really have a horse in this race, I'm not going to have a horse in this race, which I think maybe gives me a bit of a unique perspective. Myself and my brother went through the Clifton School System and prepared us really well for successful careers in very different directions. But I'd like to spend a few minutes tonight talking about why I think this is important. I've been an advocate for this approach for a very long time. I think that it takes a vision and it turns it into a plan. And why is that important for me right now? It allows us to take advantage of a really competitive interest rate environment. We have been in a period of historically low interest rates for some time. And this referendum at this time allows us to leverage that capability at the right time, that's number one. Number two, it, as I understand it, it allows the city to access state rebates to the tune of, I think of about fifty-five million dollars, which covers about a third of the cost of this. And this referendum essentially, as I said, turns a vision into a plan. It permits critical infrastructure improvements that have to happen in this district. I think most people who are probably hearing my voice are already familiar with these. But it improves security and it improves HVAC. And if we've learned anything in the last year, it's that HVAC and how any closed facility approaches that is critically important to keeping something going, whether it's a school system, a restaurant, or a public building. It modernizes our facilities. It brings us, as I understand it, in compliance with ADA requirements. Those are laws that have been codified for decades. It's an issue like so many others that's important, but it's an issue, I think, that we in any city should lead on, so lead in. And I think it brings us into compliance with that. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I benefited from a great education in the Clifton School System. That infrastructure was developed by people in this city who had a vision, who understood how important a strong school system was to developing a thriving community. I believe that it's now our generation's opportunity, it's our time to build on that legacy so that the generations who are going to come after us, perhaps when we're no longer here, can have the same benefits that so many of us have had coming out of the Clifton School System. So if you have any questions, if you can hear me, if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk to anyone about this. If you have any questions, talk to someone, get your questions answered, and more importantly, please get out and vote on Tuesday. So thank you for the opportunity tonight, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Robertello. Ms. Orock, you would be next.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? As you know, I'm Andrea Orock, I am the Clifton Education Association Pride Chair and Fast Communicator Chair. I just wanted to first shout out school for amazing night on Tuesday, we had fun at their tricky tray. I also want to give a good shout out to my school twelve family. We're doing amazing since the couple of weeks we've been back. Awesome job trying to get everything back to normal and making our kids feel safe and enjoy school once again. I want to just announce to the public that on May twentieth, we are going to have the Latino Institute have a workshop at night for our parents. This conference is going to be held in Spanish for our communities. And it's going to have four classes, possibly five, and one of them is driver's licenses for the undocumented. How to manage stress for the parents. We are going to do social media tackling texting, bullying, and so interactions on the internet. Also, we will be doing, sorry, I lost my notes here, immigration rights. So I'm going to do that in a couple seconds in Spanish and then I'll go back to English. So para los familias que hablan español, vamos a tener una conferencia para los padres la noche, por la noche, el veinte de mayo. En esta conferencia vamos a tener clases en español y tenemos las clases de manejando el estrés de los padres, sus derechos.
Ms. Orock, Ms. Orock, you put your mute on.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Sorry, touch, all right. So let me go back. So para los padres, vamos a tener una conferencia en español por la noche, el veinte de mayo. Por la noche vamos a tener clases de manejando el estrés de los padres, sus derechos de inmigración, licencia de conducir para los todos, y habitaciones de comunitar en la casa, y redes sociales. Esos son mensajes de texto, imitación, y otros temas. Also, we are going to have a district-wide trivia night, May sixth. We're going to have prizes for the winners. We invite everyone, Board of Ed, community leaders and families. I will be sending out a district-wide flyer. We will be playing on Kahoot and we'll have top three winners of the night will pick up some prizes. May is full of wonderful events and then we will be having pizza with the parents at School Seventeen and School Twelve in the last week of May. And also, we will be hosting another district-wide game show night. So it'll be five games on Zoom and it'll be competing with all the families on Zoom because we really like to encourage our family engagement. On Tuesday, we had a family game night and we provided over a hundred board games to our families so they can have a nice fun family game night. And with that, their communicating skills, they're doing by motor gross and also learning how to work together. So that's all for, I have for tonight and thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Orock. Ms. Lori Lalama, you're next.
Well, good evening to everyone, I hope everybody's doing well. There's a few things I want to highlight. So the first thing are the air purifiers, they're doing a great job throughout the district. And we want to thank Dr. Robert Ozi and the Board of Ed for using the SR2 CARES funding for it. It is another tool in our arsenal to help protect the students, the staff, along with the masks, social distancing, the plastic separators, and the hand sanitizers. I also would like to, to really thank, because this was something that was done in an emergency and we really appreciate it. Next, Dr. Robert Ozi's team and my team are part of Dr. Saul Rubenstein's Rutgers Labor Management Collaborative. We met with the leaders in the state. So the leaders are from NJEA, the School Boards Association, the Superintendents Association, the Principals and Supervisors Association, and a few of the national leaders and in other countries. The Secretary of Education spoke, Miguel Cardona, as well as Phil Murphy. So the discussion points were very important. And I'm just going to give you a brief summary, very brief. How to build a positive school culture, because everything revolves around our students. That's why we're all here, is for kids. So through strategies supporting collaboration, which sparks innovation, models best practices, and we find solutions. So the importance of a school culture is collaboration. And the collective pride in the district is fundamental. This illustrates how we can work together, communicate, and have mutual respect. Mutual respect should be the outcome and it should not be based on fear. I believe that we have developed authentic collaboration, giving a voice where there wasn't previously, to make true progress which empowers everyone. So this is a very important part, this collaborative that we belong to. And it has improved many ways, I believe, Clifton School District within the association and within the school board and the administration. Now, the last topic is standardized testing. I'm going to assume that there isn't one educator that thinks these tests are important. These tests are, to me and to most of the groups that I belong to, are not even worth it. Are children standardized? I know my two daughters are totally different, all right? They were brought up the same, had the same background, the same education, but they're two totally different. Why are kids nowadays data points? And these data points are for testing companies. State and federal government has all your children's information on their pipeline. And they have everything, anything that you see in, in our real time, it's there. Anything that you filled out for schools, for government, all of your children's stuff is up there. And I don't think most parents and groups understand that. These tests actually stratify the inequities in our school districts. These testing companies are making a lot of money and that is their goal. Recently, I was at a meeting and two hundred million dollars were spent by Pearson to ensure that the tests go on. Now, why are they spending all that money to lobbyists to get kids to take these tests? In the Western Hemisphere, headquarters is in Hoboken. Tax-free, they don't pay any taxes, Pearson does not pay one cent in taxes. And they have their cloud headquartered in Clifton. Sadly, our New Jersey Senator Theresa Ruiz is now trying to craft a bill to overturn the New Jersey Department of Ed for postponing these tests. So there's a lot of things that are going on. And if anybody would like to discuss the standardized tests, there's a group that had a presentation last night called Save Our Schools, New Jersey. And they're backed by many groups throughout the United States. So we could really think of portfolios or think of in-school-based testing, something that we design and not corporate reformers. Because I do think testing is important, but I would like to see something different in the long run. So that is mine for tonight and next time it'll be about learning loss. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lalama, as always. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Langer.
Thank you, President Smith. Tonight, you will see my resignation on the agenda. And I'm going to ask for your patience when I get emotional as I speak from the heart and share some of my story with you. I grew up in Clifton. I could see the band field from my bedroom window growing up. I remember being a little kid and my mom would march me and my sister up and down the driveway. I went to school too. According to the song, they're the best school in the land. Woodrow Wilson Middle School and then Clifton High School. I remember my mom telling me that your education is what you make of it. In a school that had over thirty-five hundred kids, it would easy, it would be easy to get lost in the crowd. But that diversity and its size was its strength. Of course, I was in the Clifton Mustang Marching Band, the show band of the Northeast. I played the French horn and the melophone in the marching band, I was in the orchestra. I was a four-year varsity swimmer, president of the German club, and I graduated with eighteen college credits. I'll say it again. Clifton's diversity and its size is its strength. In two thousand and five, I went to college with eighteen credits. I also kept in touch with some of my teachers. And halfway through my sophomore year, I learned that with sixty college credits, you could get an emergency sub-certification in the state of New Jersey. So when I came home in June of my sophomore year of college, I had my very first day substitute teaching twenty-six kindergarteners. And if there's anything that will make you question whether or not you are ready to teach, twenty-six kindergarteners in the month of June will do that. But trial by fire, I was in love with it. I wonder if that emergency sub-cert still exists. And if that might be a way to help get more substitute teachers? Because if this pandemic has highlighted anything, it is how hard it is to get the support to cover for teachers when they really need the help. And I wonder if there's a way to partner with maybe Montclair State University or William Patterson to encourage future educators to practice their pedagogy while they continue learning and fill a much-needed gap in our system. We need more substitute teachers. In my first year as a middle school science teacher, I was on a safety patrol field trip and Judy Basford happened to be chaperoning on that bus. And I will never forget how scared every other professional was. They're scared of you, you're on the board, that's important. And by the end of the trip, I could not believe how much I appreciated you for your directness. I have a lot of respect for that because it can be hard. And I think that's something that intimidated people. But I thought it was beautiful, especially from a woman in leadership. There's not enough of that. From there, I never would have made it far without the teachers I shared classrooms with, many of whom were my former teachers. The teachers I ate lunch with. The ones that stayed late to talk about the students that weighed heavy on our hearts. They shaped me into the person I am. And I am so grateful for that. In my fourth year, I believe it was Gary Frankel, the Science Supervisor, was able to get our school district into the Whiprow Science Education Fellowship. It was a program with Montclair State that had three cohorts of 20 teachers. And in their second cohort, I was selected to participate. And it focused on developing science teacher leaders in better understanding the standards, the next-generation science standards, and how to infuse three dimensions of learning from the facts of science to the skills and the thought processes. In my fifth year, I was transferred to Christopher Columbus.
Mr. Smith, that's five minutes, but just to let you know.
Okay, Ms. Langer, if you could finish up your statements.
Absolutely. I was really shook by that because it was something I did not ask for. And I felt like I lost a community in many ways. And I think that shows how, in our goal to become one Clifton, maybe there's still some work to do there. But within a few months, the leadership, Vanessa Gaba, Mark Gengaro, who was there at the time, and Fran Parker, gave me such a warm welcome and put me into a leadership position that in many ways kept me around. And Mr. Teigen, I know it might not have been easy, but you found a way to give me a leave of absence when I needed it. And I came back and brought so many things from that into my classroom. And so to wrap it all up, I want to thank you for the impact you've had on my life. I want the students to know that your education is what you make of it, and our diversity is our strength. And I want you to know that Dr. Robert Tozzi, I know I may have been difficult asking a lot of really hard questions this year. Your decisive leadership, whether I agreed or not, was important. And I am not leaving because of the pandemic or because of Clifton. I have some really big dreams I want to go chase. And I saw today that there were two students from Christopher, Ashley Hernandez and Mariam Mufla, that were accepted to five Ivy League colleges. Talk about big dreams. I want to congratulate them and wish them well. Thank you so much, not just for my 11 years, but for how you grew me into the educator that I am. And I hope that you will continue to welcome me as a resident at board meetings. And I hope that that will be in person soon. Teachers and students are back, and that was something that I felt very supportive when I heard board meetings would be back in person, so I hope that that will happen soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and all the best to you. Alright, next up, we have Mr. Mark Brunsack. Mr. Brunsack, you're up.
Good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Thanks, President Smith, Vice President Abadraho. I want to give a big shout out to Max Rubin for getting the invitation to the film festival for Passaic County. Shout out to Ms. Langer. I wish you continued success in your future endeavors. And what can I say? I'm coming here every three weeks. We're five days away from, we're five days away from this special election on the ballot. Can't even be here in person to, to, to comment. And you gave the reasons, President Smith. I understand. It's so critical. The last time I came, I hear about all these committees, and we're forced to watch about all these committees and to listen to all these committees. And then something about the attire that you wear to the meetings. And all I've been asking for is to give parents the opportunity to send their kids into school for five days a week. That's all I'm asking for. You heard the teachers' union rep, Ms. Alama, I guess her name is, I don't remember what her name is. She was saying that, oh, thanks so much for the, for the air filtration or whatever. I mean, there's got to be at least 20, 25% of people vaccinated at this point. I don't even know why you're getting vaccinated at this point. If we can't even have five days, if parents can't have the five-day, an option to send their kids into school five days a week. Makes no sense to me. And she's got some nerve, you got some nerve to complain about the standardized testing over here. You know, every student's regular. There needs to be some sort of basis for these students to learn, and what's the issue? You've done it for how many decades have so many teachers done well to teach their students how to prep for these standardized testers? I know no system is perfect, but there needs to be some way to measure the success of the student. So this is what I'm asking for. There's no committee here. I get it. You got a finance committee. You got some of these other committees as well, the policy committee. Obviously, you need policy to, to implement new policy, get rid of old policy. Is there ever going to be a committee to try to get the parents to have an option to allow their kids to be in school, to have that option, to get in-person learning? Because it's obviously not, it's, it's obviously not working. What other reason is there? It's, it's not working for all the students. And I know Ms. Anina said, yes, it works for a goodly portion of students. They are, you know, they're very effective, you know, learning remotely, but there are, there's got to be a lot of kids out there. They're having a very difficult time. Not, you know, psychologically, I mean, it's just unbelievable. So this is, this is what I'm asking for the board. I'm asking for the board to give the parents an opportunity to send their kids into school five days a week. There's absolutely no way that on a Tuesday and a Friday, the same deep, similar deep cleaning does not occur in the same school facility that occurs on, on a Tuesday night going into Wednesday. It, it, you know, so, you know, these are things that I question constantly. You know, when I went to CHS, wonderful school, wonderful teachers over there, they gave me the tools necessary to try to become successful future, for, for, for your future. They try to give you the tools over there. It's up to you to get there, and it's up to your parents to help you get there. Give them that opportunity. I'm asking the board, give the stu, give the parents and the students the opportunity to get into the classroom over there and make life as normal as possible. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you, and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. Mr. Mount, and anyone else in the room?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Seeing none, seeing none, motion to close the public portions, Smith?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Basford, second by Vice President Abadraho. Okay, we'll move on to, we have no unfinished business. Move on to education administration. We have EA1, which is the attendance report. EA2, which is the school, 2022, 23 school calendar. is the Memorandum of Agreement between Clifton Public Schools and Fleishan University. EA4 is the 21st Century Community Learning Center Program Application Grant. And EA5 is the Care Plus New Jersey Services.
Motion to move.
Motion by Mr. Abadraho, second by Mr. Casper. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Kenova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley. Mr. Daley.
He's coming to the screen.
Oh, I see. Give him one second.
We're on EA, Mr. Daley. You're muted.
Yeah.
You're muted.
Yes, Mr. Daley, EA1 through 5.
Jim, you're, you're muted if you can hear me. Okay, he's gave a thumbs up with that.
Okay, Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadraho.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. Okay, next we have personnel. We have P1 resignations, P2 retirements, P3 leave of absence, P4 maternity leave of absence, P5 amendment leave of absence, P6 amendment of maternity leave of absence, P7 amendment of appointments, P8 change in appointment status, P9 appointment of mentors, P10 2020, 21 PBSIS administrative members, P11 additional appointments, 2021 PBSIS team members, P12 additional appointments for the 2021 after-school programs, P13 additional support staff and statements, P14 withholding of employment increment. Dr. Robert Tozzi, is that one pulled for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Smith, please.
Okay, P14 is pulled for executive session. P15 is athletic professionals. P16 is expedite credentials. P17 is student-teacher practicum field observation placements. P18 board conferences, P19 conference requests, P20 substitute appointments, P21 personnel appointments. So it's, it's all of those with 14 for executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Basford, second by Mr. Casper. Discussion.
Mr. Smith, if I can ask an amendment to P18 for workshops. I'm also doing my Level 4, Governance 4 virtual workshop as well on May 24th. It's not on there, Mr. Uche.
I'm sure we could add it. I'm not sure if it was on a prior meeting or not, but of, of course we could add it. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll make the addition of Mr. Abadraho for Governance 4. Any other questions or adjustments? Okay with Ms. Basford or Ms. Cas, Mr. Casper on that?
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Kenova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley. I see him saying yes. Ms. Danny.
Yes, abstain on P18, my name only.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadraho.
Yes, with abstaining on P18.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, abstaining on P18, my name only.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to finance facilities. Yes, Mr. Awad.
I just remembered now because of my calendar pull-up. I'm also taking governance training, May 25th.
We can add that to the agenda on May 6th, Mrs. Smith.
Okay, we'll just add the next one, Mr. Awad. Alright, next we have finance facilities. We have F1 donation to CHS, 2 donation to CHS, 3 donation to school 9, 4 donation to school 17, 5 approval for transportation services agreement 2021 school year, 6 educational data services, 7 approval to authorize the business administrator to contract Phoenix Advisors to provide continuing disclosure compliance service for the 21, 22 fiscal year, 8 approval to purchase 2 54-passenger school buses and 2 24-passenger school buses, 9 approval to authorize immediate emergency purchase of district-wide air purifier, purifiers using the CARES Act funds, 10 purchase the requisition list, 11 appointment of the auditor, year ending June 30th, 21, 12 certification of budget line item accounts, February 2021, 13 financial reports, February 2021, 14 modifications to the 2021 budget, February 2021, 15 use of facilities, and 16 claims list.
Don't move.
Don't move by Mr. Casper. Second by, who was it?
Ms. Danny.
Ms. Danny. Discussion.
President.
Yes, Mr. Kenova.
Item 8, we're discussing purchasing for additional vehicles. Are we going to have room for those in our current transportation facility?
Um, yeah, of course, they replace retiring ones.
But I thought we weren't retiring the other ones. Did we ever make a decision on what we were doing with the old ones?
We're, that's, that's actually why we're only buying four instead of six. But we have a plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. I didn't have a chance to get you, Mr. Usee or Dr. Robert Tozzi today, so I'm sorry to have to ask these questions here, but under the claims list, there was Clifton Police Traffic Officers for the Administration Building for March. Do we know what that is? It says.
I believe it's just the way it's worded. Maybe it shouldn't say admin building. I mean, that's, I don't have it exactly in front of me, but I can get it open. The, the city of Clifton bills us for traffic officers.
Oh, okay, but it's not for the administration building.
I don't believe so. I think that they just put it that way because that's where the bill came.
Gotcha. Also, under the Geese Police, is it only Woodrow Wilson that we have a contract with Geese Police, or is that the only bill that was on this claim list?
It's, it's only Woodrow Wilson's baseball field. It's the only one with an issue that we have right now, or in, in the past too, historically.
Really? We don't have an issue over at the stadium, or you have, you have, you have water over there, you have a lake.
Yeah, no issues that I'm, that have been brought to my attention. Correct.
Wow, okay.
The geese like Woodrow. They like what they're comfortable with.
I don't know. Okay, good. I'm glad.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had to, I had to switch devices because I could see and hear everybody, but you couldn't hear me. The reason for no Geese Police at the other locations is because we turf the fields. So the geese don't like turf, they do like grass.
Beautiful. So maybe after, now, maybe after next week, we won't have, we won't have an issue with Woodrow anymore, right?
Exactly. Mr. Daley always has a better answer than me, too.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Basford.
Yes, and abstaining on check number 20224.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Kenova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadraho.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move into board member comments. Ms. Danny, you are up first.
Good evening. Keep my comments very brief today. Just want to say congratulations to the. Just want to say congratulations to the to the students who were presented, you know, who were acknowledged for their recognition. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casper.
Okay, so um I'd like to congratulate all of our student achievements, and I'm going to link that with my comments on the referendum for next week. Our district, since I've been sitting on the board, has had so many wonderful opportunities for our students to achieve and have success in our school district. So I'd like to encourage everybody to go out and vote next week on the referendum. I want, I would like to have continued success throughout our district to help all of our learners and hopefully make Clifton a better place if our referendum passes to make more students even more successful through the years to come. So I'm going to encourage everyone to vote next week. It's from one thirty to eight. There are only six schools open next week to vote, so you'll have to check your your sample ballot that you got in the mail. They will be schools five, nine, twelve, seventeen, sorry, five, nine, twelve, Columbus, Woodrow and the high school. So please check your ballots, your sample ballots that you had done if you didn't vote by mail and ballot already. I'd also like to congratulate our ninety eight students thus far that have obtained the New Jersey Seal of Bilitracy. There's been articles in our Clifton Journal, so I'd like to congratulate everybody in that. I'd also like to thank all of our donors. Thank you for continuing to support our district and making our educational system better for our students. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Mr. Awad.
I'll keep my comments short. First and foremost, I would like to wish all those who are observing Ramadan Mubarak. I know for the next, you know, several weeks, my family and I and many other families in the city and county will be fasting from sunrise to sunset. I also would congratulate to the two young ladies on getting accepted to multiple Ivy League schools. It just shows you that hard work truly does pay off. I wish you guys the absolute success and to the rest of the students likewise. Also, you know, sometimes, you know, we may get into, you know, certain discussions during our meetings, but at the end of the day, you know, everybody has the right intentions and we are here to work for the students and staff, and that's always been our goal. Disagreements come and go about policies and ideas and all that, but at the end of the day, everybody knows their intentions and they have their heart in the right place, and that's all that matters to me. I always, you know, wear my emotions on my sleeve, as they say. But, you know, at the end of the day, I really truly do care for our city, for our students, for our staff, especially, you know, the hard work that Dr. Robert Tozzi and the board and all the staff members in our district working harder for this referendum because we are not only just, you know, affecting just this generation students to future generations, you know, as my wife and I are expecting our first child in September, you know, this referendum, you know, now that I'm getting into this whole parent mode and thinking and stuff, it truly is going to affect, you know, so many kids in our district now and in the future, and we're just setting them up with the right tools and assets to succeed. And hopefully, you know, once this does pass and a couple of years pass and we do get the results and everything is up to date and we'll see our city thriving, you know, our students thriving, you know, our community thriving, and I just wish the utmost success to our district and to everybody that's working really hard for this referendum. Don't forget to vote on April twentieth. If you haven't voted yet, vote yes. Mr. Daley always says you get sixty million dollars of free money. I know I like free money, so let's go ahead and get this done. And if anybody does have any questions, I know that the board and especially superintendent and his staff were ready to answer any questions. You know, let's get the facts straight, you know. We will overcome this and I really, I hope for the best for our district and.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to thank all the speakers that came out tonight to Mr. I Prentiac. We do have an education committee that meets regularly to speak about education. So that would be where you would address your concerns to about classes and students being back full time. To the retirees, to Stephanie, I remember that trip. I remember the teachers being a little leery of me being on that trip, but we had a great time and you guys were so welcoming and you knew that I was there for one thing to make it successful and to make sure the children were safe and to have a great time. We had we had a lot of fun on that bus and I'm never going to forget you guys how welcoming and at the end it was just phenomenal. Thank you. I really appreciated that. To Max Rubin, I'm so happy that you've taken the mental health issue and really run with the ball, so I appreciate that. And to all the other speakers that came out tonight, thank you. April nineteenth nineteen ninety four, almost twenty seven years ago, April nineteenth nineteen ninety four. If anybody doesn't remember that date, I remember that date because that date affected the way Colfax Avenue is shaped. It was the day that we voted on Chilton's property. Nineteen ninety four. And I brought this up, I had to ask the superintendent the date because I didn't remember how long ago it was, but I remember I remember vividly, it was the year before my son was born. And we had a chance. We had a chance to do something that would affected the Clifton community for a long time. So these are my personal views and opinions right now that I'm speaking as a board member. That's one thing that I have to say, that my personal views and opinions, I don't represent my personal views, don't represent anybody else on the board, not does it represent the district. But I'm going to tell everybody that my daughter casted her ballot Easter Sunday. And I didn't prompt her, but she does, my daughter does pay attention. She watches the meetings and she does, she does plug in because it's really important to her. She comes back to the community, she volunteers when she can, she's always stepped up to the plate. But she votes by mail, she got an absentee ballot, I didn't. So I asked her after she sealed it and put it on the calendar and said, make sure it gets to the Dropbox, Mom, I got to go back to work. I said, gee, how did you vote? In two thousand and eight, Mom, when I was a senior, those bathrooms are the same as they are now, and I wouldn't go to the bathroom in them. Fix it. Make sure this vote gets out. Make sure that you tell people that I'm supporting it. I'm an alumni of School Five, Woodrow Wilson and CHS. I walked the field of that field on Woodrow Wilson. And I remember you wouldn't let me in the car because of the bird droppings on my feet. I remember the bathrooms in every elementary school because we went to cheerleading events and we went to events all over the city. This is the chance for the community to get it right. Just like our bathroom in the house, you want to do it over. And you've kept it up and kept it up and kept it up, but now it needs a sledgehammer. It's time, people. It's time to do the right thing. Nineteen ninety four, we had a chance. We had a chance to make it different here in Clifton. So I'm hoping people get out and vote. I can't tell you how to vote. But I can tell you that you have a chance to make a difference from every grade level up. The students at school at CHS are giving their overwhelming support. They see the value in it, even though most of them will not see the difference that it's going to make. So I ask you all to please get out and vote and do what's right for the students of this community. Strong schools equal a strong community. It's time to do the right thing. Let's reverse what we did in nineteen ninety four. We have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bassford. Ms. Beltran.
Okay, I'm going to keep it short tonight. I would just like to thank all the speakers that came out as well as congratulate all of our students that are getting accepted to great schools, including the Ivy League. But even if you aren't getting accepted to the Ivy League, everything that you are achieving, even if it's going to a local college or a community college, is still a great achievement. I'd also like to remind everyone to please come out and vote on the twentieth. There's many important things in this. It's not a one issue, bond issuance. There's issues pretty much for everyone, whether you're into facilities like I am, so I really would like the money for the boilers. Boilers are extremely expensive and getting a thirty percent discount on something that normally would cost the district upwards of five hundred thousand dollars a piece is very beneficial to the budget. And again, I'd just like to thank everyone who came out tonight to speak and I look forward to seeing everyone in person soon.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say Ms. Jenny Galanti passed away a few days ago, so my condolences to her family. I know she was battling through cancer and fortunately, you know, she was called to God. For all the speakers that came out, Mr. Max Rubin, congratulations on being inducted in the film festival. It's really a great honor just being nominated, but I watched some of your short films and they were excellent, so best of luck. Ms. The Lama, I love the idea on creating an internal test. I'd love to hear more about that and how that would work. Maybe that's something we can bring up at the educational committee and start the brainstorm. Ms. Ligonier, thank you for sharing your story with us and I just want to wish you success in your next chapter. And getting down to, I guess, the, we call it the meat and potatoes, the referendum, or how I like to call it, investing in the future of Clifton. So you've heard from us, you know what it is, you know what the referendum is all about, but now it's time that we hear from you. So how do we hear from you? We hear from you through the vote. Now it's your decision. You have all the information at hand, you know where the website is. If you know people in the area that don't know about it or they don't have information about it, I would now say now's the time to reach out. You have a few days to get to them so they can understand what it is so that they have a proper mindset when they do vote. Then reach out to your neighbors, reach out to your friends, make sure that people are getting out of the vote. You know, it's a very important referendum. And as Ms. Bassford said, we can't tell you how to vote, but we just want to make sure that you do vote. We love to hear your comments and your feedback in these committees. And the way that we're going to hear from you in this case is through a vote. So it's very important that you make sure that anyone in your family, everyone who you're close to or your friends and family in Clifton, people, HSAs, PTAs, et cetera, just make sure that on that day, we get out the vote. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Mr. Daley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would like to give best wishes to Miss Langer on whatever career she's and goals she's pursuing. It's a great thing in life when somebody realizes the goals they want to achieve and goes after it. Part of your success is already there because your aspirations is to achieve goals. It's often said that the best people have experienced failure before they experienced success. And that's so whenever pitfalls you may have going forward, never get discouraged and keep your eyes on the prize. Again, congratulations to Max Rubin. He's really a shining example. Does such a good job in his presentations when he's here on the board, speaking to the board and to the public. He's really a credit, not only to himself, but he gives, even though he's a credit to himself, that transfers to us all here on the board. So I'd like to just give a shout out to him on that. It was our students who have been accepted to multiple Ivy League schools. This is not the first year or the first time. Today on the television, it was one of the, I don't know, it was one of the morning shows, maybe it was Channel Four, Channel Two. There was a gentleman from Bloomfield High School who they recognized. They interviewed his family, was accepted to, I think, seven different Ivy, five or seven different Ivy League schools. But, you know, and it's just lucky if somebody picks up on it, but this has happened over and over here at Clifton. So even though you may have seen that story, which is great that that was publicized and televised, I also want to pass on that that happens often here at Clifton High School. So we've always been based on trying to get the best education possible and you're as successful as you want to be. Lastly, I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Robertelli. He speaks not as often as he used to, but he's always articulate and on point and I would like to really thank him for his comments on the referendum. Those of us here on the board have worked hard over many years to move this forward. Most of these projects have been discussed for years. And like I said, the opportunity now to get a move forward and the referendum's not about whether you like a field or you want the bathrooms done. It's an opportunity for money. These projects need to be done. There's no question about it. The decision is up to you if you want the state aid or you want to foot the bill entirely. In essence, that's the question. It's been explained many times. I've always said I'm available. Anybody wants to explain why this and why that, the superintendent, any board member is out there, be happy to explain anything you want. We are available. You can reach us at least from an initial point through an email and we'll be able to follow you, whatever you want to do. We're all here to explain the reasons and the reasons why this particular package is so critical. We have an opportunity to get money that's never been coming to Clifton in this amount of money for such important projects. So it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks and wish everybody safe, safe time until we see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Vice President Abadrabo.
Thank you very much. So we've heard a thematic multiple themes for this meeting. One is student success, teacher appreciation for the districts and the referendum. So to me, obviously, we didn't plan this. It's just the way how people spoke. There's a way to intermingle these three topics, right? The referendum is needed as many and numerous people have said for students and teachers to excel. Teachers who have worked their behinds off to pay forward for what they got out of school in an environment and many who grew up in Clifton who honestly grew up in bathrooms and hallways that were acceptable then and not acceptable now. And students now who need a better learning environment in the classroom and then outside the classroom, that could be on the field, that could be in the hallway, that can be wherever. But a place where students spend more time they do in school than they do at home. You know, there are people out there and I ask Clifton to not listen to certain false information that's been being spread out there about the referendum. The April twentieth referendum vote is extremely crucial. You know, I talk about my kids a lot. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this. This is all tied together. You know, at first for the referendum, I was against it because of the fact there are people there who were COVID layoffs, et cetera. But then I started doing my own homework as a board member and understanding that it won't kick into the tax hole for another year and a half, two years. All right, hopefully people then be back on their feet. Then my wife's saying to me that, you know, what about our, you know, our kids, their classmates, the future of this district of Mr. Awad's kid coming in, hopefully, God willing, under God's protection and other kids. and other kids who are coming in, Joe Canova's kids who are going to be, you know, moving forward in the district? You know, what do we want for them? What kind of classroom do you want for them? What kind of hallway do we want them to walk? You know, what do we want them to have in a district to excel on and off the field? And it's not just about our kids. It's about kids throughout this whole entire district. It's about kids who have not even been thought of yet. Okay? And we need to do our due diligence to put what we know back into our district. Meaning, if you see something broken, fix it. When Mr. Smith and I were walking through some of these bathrooms in the district, I'm sorry, well, the schools, but we haven't seen the bathrooms in the district. The fact that you see a patterned wall, then a white box, because they couldn't find those colored tiles, has to tell you something, that they couldn't find them anymore. Doesn't that tell you that something needs to be fixed, rather than patch it up? You know, when you see, when you see a pothole in the ground, I'm sure all you curse at the state when they just patch it up and put a little black whatever on it, redo the surface. It's time to redo our district. It is extremely important. You see something wrong, you fix it. I'm going to talk about diversity now. You know, diversity of our district, and I absolutely agree, is the strength of our district. I'm proud to be the Chair Committee of our District Committee, our Diversity Committee. Why? Because, yeah, I have my own thoughts, but I get to hear what people in our district think. And what they think, I think these people are remarkable. You know, I, our board members really don't say much, because it's district-run, and they're running with it, and they're doing phenomenals. I do want to give, you know, tip my hat to them. They are doing great. Dr. Robertozzi, you know, I always say, and I will continue to say, I will support you in any way I can. You are the CEO of our district, and I am darn happy that you are the one running our district in our ship. I'm proud of all my colleagues. But, you know, the one thing that just has been irking me for the past couple of weeks is that certain people who say that they're for the referendum in public, but I know for a fact they're out there telling people not to do it, and that's just wrong. And that's just absolutely wrong. You know, it's not about showboating. It's about sticking to your guns, and sticking to your heart, and running with it. And I'm really just sick and tired of it now. I know many people have said that it's not free money. Yeah, you know what? It's not free money. You're right. It's, you know, your taxes that have paid into it over the years. But I get to what Mr. Daley's saying. It's free money that we don't have to foot for now. It's money that's coming to the district that's not going to cost us any more pain to this district and these taxpayers. One-third is one-third. I don't know about you guys. I should all have a blank check for $55 million. Let's take it. It's important to our district. It's important to strengthen our district, just like that diversity is a strength of our district. We are one Clifton. It's always a great day to be a Mustang. For someone who grew up in this district, and kids are going to this district, and if my brakes might back, their kids are going to go to this district. And they're not going anywhere. So let's do it for our kids. Let's do it for our future. And again, I know it took a long time. It's just, it's important. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Abadrau. I have to thank my fellow commissioners. You saw from the committee reports tonight that this board is actively working, actively doing their duty, actively doing what they were elected to do, and performing a great job on all the committees. So I'd just like to commend everybody and thank you for the great work that the committees are doing. They really are working and working well. Obviously, to Max Rubin, to Miriam, to Ashley, so proud of you and so proud of so many of our students for so many accomplishments. To our staff and to so many of those staff members who have done such great things and such great accomplishments. For those that are retiring after a long career, for all that you have given to this district, we're so happy and proud for all that you have done for Clifton Kids. To our volleyball team, our girls' volleyball team, who, who won yesterday, I believe, and is now moving on to the, to the state quarterfinals. As Ms. Basford said, in 1994, for $12.5 million, we could have had this state-of-the-art complex that would have handled all of our overcrowding needs, our administration building, bus garage, state-of-the-art science labs, tennis courts, all that stuff. And you can't even get a small addition for $12.5 million today. So I truly hope and pray that people will keep that in mind and not overlook another opportunity where we can help our school district and better our school district. We're all here for the kids. We're all here to make it the very best district that we can for our kids. Is this going to make it great? Do we have the best of everything in Clifton? No, absolutely not. Would I love to offer the best of everything, but we offer the best that we can do, and Clifton can do a lot better than 100-year-old bathrooms, 100-year-old boilers, security at our elementary schools, and a sporting and phys ed and community field that is beyond embarrassing, beyond deplorable. Our kids deserve better than that. Is it the best? Is it dynamic? Is it the Taj Mahal? Absolutely not. But our kids deserve better than what's, what's available and what's out there. So this is our opportunity to make things better, and I hope that the public will join in helping make things better. But just get out there and vote. Get out there and vote your conscience. Go out and vote your civic duty. So please remember on Tuesday to go out and vote. I'd also like to commend Ms. Jessica Tremble. Board members have not had the opportunity, or the public, if you'd go and take a look at her virtual calming room that she made. It truly is amazing. I, I, I tried a couple of the different things, and some of the, the music and the sounds, and just to be able to put yourself in a calming situation. I know many staff, many kids will enjoy this tremendously, and a great amount of work went into this. So I commend Jessica on doing a great job with that. I'd just like to quickly just make a comment about the donations that were made tonight. Throughout time, many people come back and donate things to our district, and we are so appreciative of those donations. And I just wanted to commend the donations that we had on our agenda tonight. We had from right here in town, a law firm, Coradina and Papa. They donated a replica of our Mustang mascot. It's made of 100% recycled aluminum, and that was donated to the high school. Ms. Joanne Santiglia, she made a generous donation of $100 to go toward book finds for our seniors. So many seniors, you don't have to pay some of your book finds because of this wonderful donation by this wonderful generous person. School number nine, Mr. and Mrs. Eric Schneimbacher of Park Ridge donated a large number nine. And school number 17, our former superintendent of schools, Mr. William Leese. The technology center at school 17 was named after him, and his son and his family and his memory has graciously donated $5,000 to that technology center. So we truly are grateful and thankful to all those people that donate to our schools and to our kids. It truly is appreciated, and I just wanted to make reference to those people. So thank you. Dr. Robertozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to share my screen for a minute. I just want to have a graphic up. I'm not doing a presentation. I promise. I just want a graphic up while I'm speaking. So just give me a second. Just could you give me a thumbs up if you see the screen? Good? Alrighty. I'm going to be very singularly focused during my comments tonight on this upcoming referendum, which is, ladies and gentlemen, five days away. Please, please, please take your opportunity to vote on Tuesday. This is a local decision that will affect our local community, that will affect our kids for the next several decades. And this decision will be made by the local people, but only the ones who vote. So remember that our school district benefits from its strong community, and our community benefits from the strength of its schools. We truly are one Clifton. So in-person polling is available next Tuesday from 1:30 to 8:00 p.m. The polling locations are School 5, School 9, School 12, Christopher Columbus Middle School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and Clifton High School. If you are a registered voter in the city of Clifton, you most likely have already received or will be receiving a sample ballot in the mail. That sample ballot will tell you your polling location. There is a chance it is different from the November election. The November election had a lot more polling locations. Unfortunately, because this is not a national election, the county, say, County Board of Elections condensed the voting location. So you will be able to find out where you're supposed to vote on your sample ballot. If you don't get a sample ballot, or you're still not sure, you can go on our website, and you can type in your address, and it will tell you where to vote. If you have any problem doing that, call my office, and we will let you know what your polling location is. The website also has a, has a link, excuse me, has a link where you can find out your voting location, but I just said that. If you are a vote-by-mail person, if you have already been voting by mail, and you're one of those people who've signed up to continually vote by mail, you should have received your mail-in ballot already. That mail-in ballot must be postmarked by April 20th. Please, sending it earlier is advised. Unfortunately, if you're not registered to vote, it is too late, and if you wanted a mail-in ballot, it is too late to request one. If you haven't had a chance to go on our website, take five or 10 minutes to learn about all of the projects. Any piece of information you want to know about voting, or the finances of this $168 million referendum. There's an extensive list of frequently asked questions. And if there's a question that's not on the website, you can send an email to onclifton@clifftownschools.net, and you'll get a response within a reasonable amount of time. Again, local decision, local cost, benefits our local students, benefits our kids, Clifton kids. Most of the funding comes from local taxes. These decisions are being made by residents who were elected by their neighbors. This Board of Education, all nine board members unanimously have voted that it is time for this referendum. The citizens of Clifton of 40, 60, 100 years ago voted to pay for major construction so the students today would have schools. So the discussion can't always be, well, this should have been done already, or we need to postpone this for a few more years. This board has decided. The people who you have elected have decided it's time. We have stretched as long as we can out of a concern for taxes. This board has historically been very conservative in raising your taxes. They're very cognizant that New Jersey pays the highest property taxes in the nation. The board knows this. That's why next year, this board is proposing a 0% tax increase. That's why last year, going into this school year, this board proposed a 0% tax increase. And that's why the year before, the tax increase was 0.8%. This is unheard of. It's unheard of. So we have to also think of the taxpayers' investment in our buildings. You have to invest in your home. By renovating your home, you need to invest in your school buildings to make them last, and to make people want to stay in your community, and make people want to come to your community. So in closing, ladies and gentlemen, almost 10,500 students rely on this school district. Our primary goal is to educate them. Having new, clean, efficient facilities helps students feel more safe and feel more comfortable, and ultimately impacts that learning. So we have an amazing staff that rises up to meet their academic needs and their social, emotional learning needs. This referendum is a parallel effort to what our teachers do and our staff does on a daily basis to address our physical building needs. And I recall the words of one student who said to me at a meeting that parents and teachers are always constantly telling students to do their very best. This referendum, ladies and gentlemen, is an attempt to provide the facilities to support students so that they can do their best. Please take the time to vote on Tuesday, April 20th, and thank you very much. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. Okay, we'll now move on with the agenda. Next would be new business. I see no new business. Next would be executive session. The board will be meeting in executive session on, on a personnel matter. Do I have a motion to convene an executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Abadrau.
Talked to you.
Seconded by Mr. Awad. Discussion.
Mr. Smith, action may be taken when we come back.
Action may be taken, yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Awad. Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadrau.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, could we just clarify with Dr. Robertozzi about how much time we're going to be in executive session, just so the public knows?
Yep.
I expect that I will need to speak to the board for about 10 to 15 minutes, and then depending on questions and answers, maybe another 15, 20 minutes. So I would say, conservatively, I would say 45 minutes tops. But I'm hoping it's a half an hour.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mountain, if you could please direct us into the breakout room?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, everyone back in. All right, uh, returned from executive session, uh, roll call, Mr. Ussy.
You're muted, Mr. Ussy.
I apologize for that. Uh, Mr. Awad, you sit here.
Here.
We're waiting, I think Ms. Bassford's still returning.
I'm here.
Oh, no, you're here. I'm sorry. I'm trying to count everybody. I apologize. Ms. Bassford, Ms. Beltran.
I saw her somewhere.
Right. Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daley. See what I'm saying here? Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Assalamualaikum, I'm here.
Mr. Smith.
Here. Uh, if we just wait a second, I do not see, uh, Ms. Beltran right now. So if we could just wait a second to see if she is coming back in. Mr. Mountain, you don't see her yet, right?
No, Mr. Smith, I don't see her at all.
Okay.
It's a good time, it's a good time to remind anybody who's watching the live stream that we have a referendum on April 20th. Please vote. And what is that vote for? In case you haven't heard.
Referendum.
Uh, I don't know if I have, you know, so does any, can anyone text her?
Dr. Robert Tozzi, when is there a front of vote again?
It'll be April 20th. Polls are open from 1:30 to 8:30 PM.
And how many locations will be open?
At schools, five, nine, um, Christopher Thomas Middle School, Woodrow Wilson Middle School, and Clifton High School.
And how much of this is the state paying?
Um, well, we're asking for $168 million and the state is going to cover one third of that, almost $55 million in state aid.
And if this vote doesn't pass, will we ever see that state aid?
That state aid will be long gone, and then this board will have to regroup and decide on a, on a plan for the future.
And when's the last time we actually fixed this district up?
I don't know.
Fix this what?
President, when was the last time?
Mrs. Smith, I texted Dana, she's not answering back.
He just entered, I believe.
Ms. Beltran is joining right now.
We're talking about the last referendum in 1994, I was in fourth grade, just want to put it out there.
If our boilers are 100 plus years old, who the heck was president 100 years ago? I'm curious.
Ms. Beltran, are you back in?
George Washington.
Yes, I am, sorry, my, uh, phone died.
Okay, no problem, we just wanted to wait for you. Okay, uh, the board, um, met in executive session, uh, to discuss, uh, some personnel matters. Um, and Ms. Gutierrez, if you read, uh, resolution.
Yes, happy to, thank you, Mr. Smith. So the resolution that is, uh, going to be, uh, uh, voted on now is P-14, uh, for personnel. Resolved that the Clifton Board of Education accepts the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to withhold the employment and adjustment increment of the following individual for the 2021, 2022 school year. And that is for employee ID number 010-2021. So the resolution is being amended slightly, uh, to add the words "and adjustment" before the word "increment."
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Casper.
Second.
Second by Vice President Abidrabo. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abidrabo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, again to, uh, all those celebrating Ramadan, Fahim and Farahs, wishing you a happy Ramadan. Uh, and if you just keep, uh, in your thoughts and prayers, um, Mr. D And if you just keep in your thoughts and prayers, Mr. Daley, as he's going through some family issues, just to keep in your thoughts and prayers. All right, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Back in.
So move my motion by Mr. Awad, seconded by Mr. Casper. Roll call, or any objection?
Pass.
Seeing none. Thank you all very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, familia.